I'll take my chances for it because I just have a bad feeling about that.
She very well could be, like I said, they didn't mention on the phone call today.
We've been talking about her September the twenty, correct?
September the twenty-sixth is the one in Tenasket.
Oh, I've got a wildland fire advisory committee and Clealum.
Oh, down there, well, Clealum's isn't till October first, so that's not gonna help it. But there is the one there in Winthrop on the twenty-fifth.
Is she gonna be in town on the twenty-fourth?
They don't have the twenty-fourth listed on here, so I do not know. She's got, they're in Leavenworth on the twentieth, and then the next one is in Winthrop on the twenty-fifth, and then Tenasket's the twenty-sixth. And I'm sure that she's gonna go up to Winthrop, do it there probably, spend the night, and then come to Tenasket in the morning.
Well, so far that is that you probably misses. But what was the time she's gonna be there?
It's gonna, she's got from five to seven, and we do not have the place picked yet. But it'll be someplace in Tenasket, and we'll be sending out like letters and stuff, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up about it.
Yeah, well, I mean, Clealum gets all the one, I think you can back there by three thirty something.
I can't do that, like I said, I wanted to get you to some.
How's Mel Ho coming around, the pole project?
Pole, what?
Mel Ho?
Oh, the decision's been signed.
Yeah.
And, oh, let's see, the first sale, it's advertised, I don't think it's closed yet.
Okay.
A couple of weeks, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we had the day-long meeting where anybody could come in and ask questions and pick up apps and stuff like that. And I thought it would go, you know, people fifteen and that, you know, three, four hours, and I guess it was over forty-five minutes. Because everybody showed up at the thing and asked their questions, and then they were done with it, so. And I believe there were three or four outfits that showed up at that, but I haven't heard who's put in yet.
Pretty big, pretty big companies.
So, because I think it's still.
Well, yeah, right, okay, hope there's a lot of interest.
I, I do too.
Yeah.
The paperwork part, getting all the EA done and stuff like that, I thought that went pretty smoothly, from what I hear, I think they're near the end of it, but.
Yeah, I haven't, the forest collaborator supported it, that helps.
Yeah, it does, and there was one, um, yeah, she, all these initials for all these.
What were you saying?
There was one that they hinted about maybe they were gonna object to it, but then. But they were gonna look at that for the Twist River.
Okay.
The one that they're going through all the paperwork and therefore the EA now, and they are gonna be looking at that.
That's the one they gave bids across, right?
This is a new area, but I did hear about that one, and I think they're trying to rework it.
Yeah.
Because it had some helicopter, I can't remember the name of the sale, it didn't have helicopter sales in it for units.
That was Twist River.
It's up in that area, and the Twist River, they maybe. That sounds kind of like, yeah.
That's already, that's already going, that's where we're looking at from up there, the gathering. You can't even tell there's anything going on over there, it's just a big flat.
And that Twist River project is probably gonna get changed to just the Twist project.
Okay.
Just to let you know that.
Okay.
The one woman, Jen, that does GIS up there, and she's up there in Winthrop, her husband was one of them that was killed in the 2015 fire on Twist River. And they got to thinking, you know, it kind of after the fact, well, they didn't want her to be remembered about it any more than needed to be, so they were gonna change it to just the Twist project. And drop the river, so that it didn't sound quite as connected.
Still being remembered.
This is true, but, yeah.
Yeah, I hope that works out.
I think too, they, they sound like they've been a lot of stuff, and they're gonna try to go on those deeper slopes.
Yeah.
For some of that new techniques that they're coming out with.
Right.
I guess the end of this week, over on the Colville, they've got a demonstration going on, this Thursday, Friday, because we've got some people from Tenasket that are gonna go over there. See how it looks.
Is that where the tethering is?
Yes, tethered logging, that's it, yeah. I didn't think it was necessary for me to go, if they all go, and then when we have it on Tenasket, then they can take me up there and show.
Tethering, steep, steep ground with bigger lives, so.
Yeah, it, it's, it's like, power logging, anchor point, and you have a machine up on top. It's capable of putting the engine down, but also capable of assisting enough that it gets back up.
You know, I saw you do stuff like that, it's even a little tighter circumstance right along eighty-two. They actually, they actually made well-trained rivers, so that's where it was the highway, but it looked like a real special. Do that.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of, if they need people, that that's basically what they do, or if they can just train some of their loggers that they normally use, and then they can learn how to do it, I'm not, I'm not.
Just rigging them both in there.
Yeah, it's actually not, not a branding concept, it's been used in all kinds of road construction and.
Oh, okay.
Working on these, like on the riverbanks and stuff, for example, I remember in Flint, seventy-two, we were a lot of them, and two cats working, one of them's up on the drag, and the other guy's down with the bank.
But that timber's gotta be worth something, that timber's gotta be worth something.
When I think up there in Twist, they've got some good timber. From what I hear, Tenasket, it takes more acres to pull out the same amount of volume.
Especially with the steel thing. A lot of rock up there.
Well, that's a part of it, yeah, they're looking at prescribed fire on that east west side. But they gotta do some coordination when the alignment and stuff, because there's no way they can start it right at our boundary and then go up. They're gonna be dealing with a state out there.
If the neighbor agreement should help with that stuff, right?
Yeah. And did you know that we have a new timber management assistant on Tenasket?
Yeah.
Matt Avery, he started, I think this is his third week. It's been vacant since Paul Nash retired last fall, I think it was, and he, he's there and learning all.
All right, where'd he come from?
He was down on McLamath, on California. And then he worked various other places before there, so.
There's a county commissioner from Wyoming, his name's Matt Avery.
Oh, really? I know with the Okanagan and Manaty Forest, we have a lot of Matts, yeah. And, and we thought about that one all, Matt, you're the fourth one up your district.
Name of Matt one, Matt two, Matt three.
How about middle names? Or Mr. Mark, Mr. Avery, get formal.
Say hello to Mr. Mark.
Yeah, he was out, look at the range allotment up there, it's cool. Josh really got ready for them, and they're not there today, so they could get some of that stuff.
Oh, on that square off. What, what's that works out?
Which one, which one? I do too, we're all ready to go, and our range people were up there doing put-in-away plots for capacity this summer and stuff like that. And then about three, four weeks ago, it was, oh, we don't have any money for the archaeological surveys.
Oh, yeah.
I said, well, as long as we can keep some money there for everybody else to keep moving forward, I don't want to drop it for fear that they'll never resurrect it again. And the one archaeologist that we have, a zone person, she has weeded down the acreages quite a bit, I think she found about two thousand acres. And it's like sixty thousand acres total with all the allotments and stuff, it's a big area, but yet it's just looking at the cattle grids, nothing else.
Anything else? Well, how do we get, you need some other treatment.
I know, that archaeology survey, that is our, our big pinch point. They just want, too much survey.
Yeah, well, I mean, it is kind of, that's.
Yeah, and everybody has to have it, if it's ground disturbing, you gotta have it.
Well, I mean, you've been experiencing, had experience where the ground has been disturbed over and over and over again, and we had to have wastewater treatment facility in Hurville. Pipe through the ground, it's like, but you know, the interesting thing about it is, is that, you know, it was a few years ago that we had a water line up there that's been there for a long time. And when they went to take it up, it was just a maintenance thing, looking for a leak, and they found a school, and buying, it was a, it was a native school.
Oh, wow.
And so, you know, they'd been in there before, I don't know how they got it, but it was quite a surprise. Because, you know, like I said, they've already been in there a few times over the years.
Yeah.
And now, well, it's like, you know, I got into discussion with the governor, I don't know how big, how much of ideas to save money, and I said, well, let's take, do you know what a super fund project is? We didn't know what it was. It's anything over a billion dollars. On a super fund project, you have any idea how much money goes into time, materials, and actual construction out of a billion dollars per cent? Five?
Seventy-five, twenty-five?
Thirty percent.
Oh, really?
Seventy percent, just all the burns and butterflies.
Wow.
Yep, but my point was, the Alaska fight, all the work has been done there over the years, do you have to do one of those assessments, when it's been done twenty-six times earlier? I don't think so.
Yeah.
But you go there. You know, you could say, you could say, just only twenty-five doing that, why do we have to do, when they go to overlay pavement on island, and you say, pavement's already there, the assessment's already been done several times.
Well, we have ourselves that we could call maintenance, and we don't have to do.
You know, you're good to go. Yeah, well, that was the deal up there, I mean, you gotta waste water treatment, it's been there since the forties.
Yeah.
And, you know, they had upgrades, and it's all on the same property, and there you go again. At least they do, if you, if you negotiate a little bit, you can end up with, you know, an unlimited survey, and that's what we ended up with, saving the downstate part of the water and power there. You know, they already had some facilities in there, sure as anything, we didn't do much, so the guy that we hired out of Coleman, I mentioned that earlier, he, you know, knows how to pare those down to some degree, he made a cost analysis. It's all over the ground.
Yeah, they've got a, I think they go through, you know, really steep slopes, don't need the archaeological surveys, it's mostly stuff around the water.
Yes, it's there.
Stuff that, you know, would attract it, like say, Native Americans, or even for historical stuff, miners and things like that, but like up there with the Toz Kuli, Rain G A, it's never been surveyed.
Okay.
So, we gotta catch up.
We gotta catch up.
Is that, is that trespass, is you okay down there?
With the cabin? Oh.
The cabin one?
They're, they're still kind of working with it, I guess there was a.
An email coming back and forth between.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The problem is, people go up there and open the door.
The gates, I know.
And it's just so hard to, so hard to believe, we have trouble up, 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 too.
I've been struggling.
Surely all these, the recreational people are starting to.
And we'll get more and more of them out there.
Yeah.
And down in Utah, it was the same thing, it was just so hard to keep gates closed.
Yeah, I was talking to one of the guys that has range up there, and he says, yeah, he says, they'll stock on ATV ears and stuff, they're getting a little bit oversells on this one, I want the gate open for the cows to come over.
Oh, my God. That could be an unusual ATV.
So they go and post it, due to time, and they put a gate, please leave the gate open, be open.
Well, the one ATV club that's here, they, and, I can't remember if Josh has made contact with Jen, they've got signs that, you know, they fit into a holder thing. Where it says, gate open and gate close, where you can just pick it up and turn it around, so it's really easy to post it then.
Yeah.
And it's easy for the rancher just to leave it the way it is, of course, you still need the people driving by to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were over there in the reservation at one point, a kid over there was lying with, he said, you close that gate down there, and he said, I didn't see the cows around.
All the way will be.
They can smell it, it's an open gate.
Well, I didn't have anything else found, just the old Mac office and the get-together with the new supervisor.
Yeah.
Kristen Bale is her name, I don't know.
Yep, saw that, saw picture of her.
Yeah, that's all I've seen, I heard her voice.
And where did she come from?
She was, immediately she was back in DC, because she just moved from Virginia, but she has been in Oregon and Washington before.
I read a little deal on her where she has experience in that Pacific Northwest.
Yeah, I think she was on the Ochico, she was a ranger down there.
Okay.
And then she was a forest supervisor, I think it was down in Arizona, but before her ranger stuff, she had jobs, she went to, she was a cougar.
The wilds, I guess she was, wow.
So she's from, or at least, in Washington too, which I would think then.
Well, she's got a lot going for her then.
Yeah, well, there's some people that have. Matt Avery, our new TMA, the timber management person on the district, he's from Maine, anyway, New England, so his screensaver is the Patriot. Well, we'll let that go for a little while, but might need to change.
Means he's got all kinds of hardwoods in his mind.
So, but I would look for the invite in the mail, I'm not, it could be email.
Yeah.
But in Tenasket, it'll be the, the twenty-sixth, and then the twenty-fifth in, in Winthrop. So, either one of those.
I just thought something else, I thought I could make it.
Because we were thinking of the, inviting the Border Patrol, backcountry horsemen, the ATV clubs.
Yeah.
Ooh, somebody had one other.
Fish and water.
Well, hen father fish and water, I guess they may wanna come.
Be, be good with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just realized, when I leave the wildfire advisory committee, I got to a two, I'm P L, that night, because that team could be.
Do we have anything else?
I don't do that, it's been a, a nice summer.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm lucky I'm in.
We've got a little.
Sorry.
That's okay, we're done, we missed it all.
You didn't have really a whole.
No, we didn't get it.
So, is it meant out on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, we have to.
Twenty-sixth in Tenasket, and that's how the twenty-fifth, yeah.
I told them that I'd be there.
Chris and I are gonna have to coordinate with some people that can cover both, and maybe they will just end up inviting them to both of them, and then they can become a mind, and I'm sure some people.
And they might go to both of them.
They very well could, who knows?
Okay.
Okay, nothing else?
Thank you.
I will leave you to do your other duties, and I'm down for December meeting, right? Yep, I got December third down.
Yes, I got that too.
Okay. Got it down, all right?
Sounds good, thank you.
Have a good rest of the week.
You have a good weekend.
And maybe I'll see whoever on the, there in Tenasket.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you guys want to do.
How did, how did she come out on that? Little problem here, we just.
Um, she, they're working on it, she came to hold up people to get the information back, so I'd say that that should be the last thing that we do. And I suppose if we have to sign them, I, but the problem is, is that one contract isn't our contract, so there's no, there's no connection. Not, yeah, not really anything that indemnifies what one goes on, and then all of a sudden, there's nothing, it just says, this is how much you're gonna pay me for this amount of hours, so. It's kind of tough, the other one, they need insurance, that one is not, that one leased is all filled out. I'm sure they're horrible, they probably have insurance, right, we just need it, we just need that thing, yeah, so.
Well, how about, I mean, if there's a delay, could we authorize the chair to, the insurance to verify?
That's a good idea, that's a very good idea.
I have got to go, all pigs tomorrow in cash, you know, but I should be back by one or two, so I can come by if it was, I'll give this one, okay? Second, motion second discussion.
Yes, okay, so, so the motion was, I believe, to authorize the chair to sign the contract with Davis Shows as long as they have their insurance in place.
Correct.
Okay, if the chair isn't here, do you, or do you feel like you're gonna be around where you can, where you can sign up at some point?
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow afternoon.
Great, okay.
Yeah, it, it would just be later in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And if I have any problems, I'll let you. So.
I have a, like, we'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah, my, if everything's set, I just gotta take there in the morning, and then when I hook on to those trailers about nine thirty, become there and dump the animals off, and come back, and like, I would, I would expect it back shortly after.
Okay, any further ado, and I would move to authorize the chair to sign a contract between Okanagan County and Martin Security pending a, uh, Okanagan County contract. In, in our format.
Second, okay, motion second, let's go.
Yeah, maybe that's what they wrote for us, they said, just that, and we, this is what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, which tells, really, anyway?
To what?
Not having the security, just not having the security.
Well, different security firms.
Yeah, it's your time for, is that contract with this fair?
Mm-hmm, no, but it's, again, I know that we're not, I know that we're not going to, but also, same come out, we have our things to say.
We wanna make sure that.
We know we're gonna sign it, it just has to be the right people.
We have to have a proper contract, yeah?
Yeah. Okay, so that part is taken care of, so I guess, do you want to move the discussion?
Sure.
Of the.
Unless, unless you wanna do. You mean it's in consent or do you do it first, or do you wanna do it right after the discussion?
Well, I know, I know, I see that, since that got on the agenda, there's something here recording it, so, yeah, I think they're here already, and if we move it up, that would be bad. If there was somebody else that was here, or that wanted to.
You're okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks for checking in.
You're welcome. So, I mean, do you think it's, do you think it is of importance to keep it only in Jan at four o'clock, I guess would be my question.
I don't think any fight from the outside, since. I'm just saying, we generally don't have people, you know.
Especially in.
No, but I think I'll discuss you, I think my, my incursus debate the other day, I just sparked a lot of interest in what I was thinking about the planning director.
Okay.
So, I was just asking.
She's recording, so.
Yeah, if someone did come in, and I have confirmation that the audio is working, so somebody could, well, listen and watch.
Okay.
You know, later on, if they really wanted to.
Okay.
We're, I don't, there we go.
Okay, all right, we'll move it up then, or I guess you're the one.
Yes.
Well, I've already agreed.
Okay, so.
We also have these vouchers to be.
So, where are we in that?
Well.
Discussion.
So I wanna make sure, since we are on video, that I clarify my debate from, in that last, that I understand the importance of a planning director knowing the county's conference of plan that they are working, absolutely. I think it's important that a planning director, you know, if we're coming, when we hire a planning director, knows conference appointments, have been around them, knows how to work underneath the framework of a conference of plan. knows comprehensive plans have been around them, um, knows how to work underneath the framework of a comprehensive plan. But it is not the planning director's job to come up with the comprehensive plan, that was all I was trying to say. So, you said a job description that I read, and that I thought was very good.
That was all we.
So.
And the job.
No, no, it doesn't, but it just changes slightly, it changes.
Yeah.
The.
And I think that, I think that the conversation basically about such is partially because I put it there, it didn't have to be right there in the top, it's, you know, that, and that was more of a function of, do we believe that this is the planning director's job or not to, let's call it. Develop or help you all comprehensive planning, because I do have to say that for I don't know how many years, period, been doing that.
Right. So, may I offer a? Just a thought on the planning director versus planning department.
I, oh, yes.
Okay. The planning department is also, I believe, a tool that the planning commission can use to, now, granted, Okanagan County is not rich, so we don't have a lot of resources, okay? But if we had a, uh, a large natural resources department, a large, um, you know, planning department where the director may not specifically be the one who is providing information directly to the planning commission. If it was the, I mean, it might go through him, but if we had a department of natural resources like Shland County, Shland County has a sub-director, whatever you're talking about, is the, uh, natural resources. Natural resources director. Um, that basically gives a lot of information to the board, to the knowledge. So. I just, I don't wanna make sure that we're looking at this as, yes, the planning director in Okanagan County is gonna be a very important position because, um, we, the, we don't have a lot of, um, other senior level employees, I should say, I don't know if that's the right word, but.
I think it gets you.
Yeah, that, that are gonna be able to give a level of, um, information to board commissioners or the planning commission about, that being said. That being said, let's, let's just read this, the Office of Planning and Community Development are primarily responsible, I like that, primarily responsible, for land use planning and code enforcement. Exactly right. The director provides day-to-day leadership, management, and development of staff in a complex, rigorous, forward-looking environment. Absolutely true. Work involves the exercise of considerable judgment resolving sensitive land use and development issues within county, state, federal, and tribal guidelines, policies, and codes. Absolutely true. Directors were expected to work closely with the board of county commissioners, planning commission, and the community to develop goals, objectives, rules, regulations, and policies that achieve quality, sustainable regional development. Absolutely true. Unique to Okanagan County is that we do not plan fully under GMA and respect a longstanding land use agreement with the Call of Confederate Tribes. Absolutely true. Now, I got a question, that last sentence, okay, is that, is that, um, unique to Okanagan County is that we do not plan fully under GMA and respect a longstanding land use agreement with the Call of Confederate Tribes.
Yeah, it's true.
Absolutely, it's true. Does it go on the job summary? Does it, do you, what, does it, should it go in the job summary?
Well, I believe it's a very important point, um, to know that, you know, we, we have.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just, I'm just asking for discussion on that last.
It is just, the, the tribal part of it is a special challenge, and part of it is because there's not a lot of governance. It's an agreement because there isn't a lot of governance, governance in Okanagan County and tribes agreed that we don't want to, that the courts decide how that works. And so, we had an agreement that said we worked together basically years ago, and it's been longstanding, I think we're talking at least twenty years.
From that standpoint, I don't, I don't think that it really matters where it goes, if it's in, okay, but I think it's, where it is, I don't think it has to be in the summer.
Because if somebody sees it, um, has actually worked with tribes, you know, they should pay their attention, they, and they should emphasize that. Some people could be looking for that, and I got, there's a couple planners in the state, one in particular that was the guy that did the short course on local planning, and he ended up working for the Swind, and, um, and made possibly another tribe, and so, there's a special challenge to that. And, um, it's hard not, it's hard to move around the state without having to work with tribes, because we have various reservations. And I included it personally because of the comment you had made earlier too about working with us.
Uh, right, just. So, and again, these are, these are talking points, I'm not set in one way or direction, um, on this, but have a thorough working knowledge of county, uh, county codes and regulations, including the Growth Management Act of Washington State, and other laws governing planning, development, environmental regulation.
So, that one is, um, if you're a state planner and you know that familiar with the Growth Management Act, you, you, you're, uh, a little bit behind.
Okay, so, so what about the planning enabling act?
It, it also is an important one, um, if you put it in there, um, you're gonna find a lot of planners that, um, plan on the Growth Management Act.
I know we're not under the Growth Management Act.
As it says that.
I know, I know that.
So, that's a, that's a cue for a planner that knows anything, because I'll, I just went back there and grabbed one of those short course on local planning books, and gave it to George to answer his questions, and the legal basis for planning in the state of Washington is pretty well-known by planners and even planning commissioners, um, that's the first part of a short course on local planning that gets told, so if a planner doesn't know that, I got, I'm already concerned.
Do you?
It's a base, even, even the planning commission act.
Just, what's that, do you, do you care what that says in there? I think, uh, no, I think it covers it, for my, yeah, I'm, I'm not, I don't have a planning background at all, so. I go away more of coming from, does it make sense?
Well, and that's, you know, I've got to deal with answering questions, does that make sense for a lot of people for a long time? Because I didn't plan in a vacuum, and still, you know, I mean, you still, you've got the same issues that you gotta deal with, so. But, you know, they generated back in ninety, they started generating planning direct planners out of eastern, by the much, just because they're trying to meet the Growth Management Act, and so, most every planner that I run into today has growth management experience. And then we have, we, there's kind of, this is another important part to that, is that even if you work, you're doing it under, you're doing it under thirty-six seven, you still have, of course, critical areas, um, and it has a long-term significance, and that's not a subjective, um, situation I'm talking about here. It's not because the law reads this way, uh, something that makes a planner believe the law, and it should, that believes the law is their philosophy, the law is the law, and so, they need to know the law, and, uh, and leave their philosophy out. They have to work for, and when they're working with a diverse group of people, they have to know that, so, um, you know, there were planners that came out of it, they, they come out of college, that that was their gospel, you know, that comes with a little bit of experience, where, you know, that's not the gospel, but it is the law, you gotta know it, you gotta know it for us.
Did you run it by, um, and the only reason I ask this is because I had heard before that there were job descriptions that were about that, that people just got, you know, they weren't really consistent with the, with the way that we were putting off job descriptions. Did you talk to H R on this?
Like I said in my email, I didn't talk to H R, but the reason why is because I wanted to make sure that there was not an impression that there was an outside influence over what I put there.
Okay, I'm, I'm good, as long as, I, I would, I would run it by.
Now that we've, we have the discussion.
Now we have the discussion. Yeah, is that okay? I'm, I'm good with that.
No, and that's, that first one I just ran by her, and I told her, this is a draft, we're just putting some stuff in here to see, you know, to see what, you know, people's feelings are, and then, um, and, and like I said in the email, it said, I came through loud and clear what the concerns are. This, the information still so has to be in there and clear and weathered, but, but no, I, my message, it was a message to you that was saying, I didn't share with anybody, please don't share with anybody else, because then we'd have people writing, and I, I did make a suggestion on, um, just a, and that's, I mean, after we get over this part, but this is a suggestion on, um, a committee that may need help for hiring, that was, I've got, there's a couple planners out there that would offer, just offer, and, uh, and a couple of people from the development community can be important. And that's those people that are really working in, in the field all the time, and have to go through, Brian Bozel offered that, and, and I, you know, that's just an offer.
I, I got offered the same thing over there, was we want to help pick, right, who it's gonna be, and I said, no, absolutely not, but I said, I mean, we're, we're the, we work for our constituents, right?
Right.
So, if they all get together and tell you, these are the, these are the, uh, the, um, things that we want, we have a planning director.
We already set that. We made up the description.
Well, no, not necessarily, I mean, what, what happens if, um, you know, if they say, uh, you know, okay, so, so let's say we got four applicants or whatever, and, and they, all these people know, and they, they come up, people say, hey, we think that you need to pick so-and-so for this reason, and another group says, we, we think you need, we need to pick so-and-so for some reason, right? Then you have to determine, okay, how many people, you know, who is going to do the best job for the most amount of people of, of.
We have to decide that, we have to decide that when we have a planning commission written in a comprehensive plan as well. But in the end, they put it on our table and say, what do you think, and we have, we have part of the interview, I've had that happen, in fact, Christian Johnson was subject to a committee of people that actually questioned him on various subjects.
Okay, okay.
And we set, and we set the, we set the questions.
Okay, so, the questions, because I don't know that I could come up with as great a question as something in the real estate business or something like that.
Right.
But as far as final selection goes, there would be no scoring or nothing like that, it would be.
Information.
It would be information.
Because all that is, 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 it ends up being a, a, a recommendation, and then, you know, you can walk away from any of that stuff and go, oh, we have to make. It's just, and you know, we have to go, well, the recommendation didn't exactly hit on a few of the things that were discussed, and some of the questions that occurred to me, and I, and I could guess what would occur to you, um, includes, you know, good customer service and really good public wealth. Um, the other one that for me is that there's a few things that I ask questions about to make sure that they know their stuff, about state records, yeah, things like that, you know, so that you can go, yeah, they have some experience.
So, if we're going to do it that way, then I've already told the group of people, no, you're not gonna have, you know, you, yes, I'm gonna meet with you, and you're gonna tell me, but no, we're not gonna do it that way. If we're gonna do it that way, I obviously have to let them know, hey, we have decided to make a change in what we're doing, and do it a different way.
Oh, yeah.
That, that would be, that's the only way that you can do it, you know.
And in, and another way, another way, you know, possibly to do it is just to say, whatever, take input on what your biggest concerns are in regard to having a planning director. And I'll bet you that you get a lot of, um, and from, there's a mix of people we met out there, there's a mix of people in the Okanagan, so it's not, you know, it's.
I'm thinking industry, I, I'm thinking of more of not just, not of over there versus over here, because that's not what it's really about. It's about like the real estate, uh, industry, right, what are their needs, what are the surveyors' needs, what are the builders' needs? So, there are different just groups of people that could provide us with input, but I don't wanna take input from a thousand people.
No, well, and you know.
We're gonna get together as the real estate, or.
Yeah, again.
Get together as a real estate, and say, get this, we'll be in front of them.
And that's fine, that's, actually, we're getting a rule that now, you know, I mean, so maybe we will do that, you know, I mean, it's just that there's, there's a list of questions, is there a real write-off in my, for me, for me, if I met its knowledge of system? And it doesn't get into those parts, I don't think we're gonna get, we need to pay, but it takes, I don't think we can get that.
That's another thing.
You could say an A I C P planner, which has a whole code of ethics, and those ethics include being impartial.
Uh, that's another thing, actually, that we haven't even talked about, is the pay.
Right.
We were paying, um, about eighty-six thousand a year for that job position.
They're good industry users.
Yeah, it did, but if you look at what the average is, or you look at the other counties, they're low, right? I mean, they're anywhere from, that was anywhere from, uh, a thousand to three thousand dollars a month lower than a lot of these other counties. So, we have to determine what our pay range is going to be.
I want it to be, right, just where I did put A I C P in there. Because, you know, the experience can go much further than that, and you need to serve by planners. Which is a test, a series of tests, they, they come certified, but I never did it because it didn't, nobody in this county cared or even wanted to have this re-fully. So, I planned outstanding around this county. So, that's, I keep, my, Wes McCord told me. Come after my.
What, well, how much do you pay him?
He goes, hundred and twenty.
I said, is that right, Wes?
Well. You know, I know you guys have been doing this survey.
Yeah.
I mean, did it, yeah.
They're not paying.
You're not gonna come out of any of that.
He was trying, he was trying to deter a survey.
They have to come to us, right?
But I, yeah. Also, once again, it's open, open deal, anybody could apply, I realize that some of these guys are, are maybe fearing that their people will apply for the job from where they're going to go. It depends on what we pay, if we're paying, if we're not paying the same, or if they're paying less, then.
Well, you know, look at, I mean, there's people like, you know, take Kent, for instance, that came over here from the west side. I mean, he's looking for the tech, the lifestyle.
Exactly.
And that's.
By the way, everyone wants someone out, right, you know, I mean.
Blind squirrel.
Yeah, blind squirrel, you know, we're, we're real lucky, and I don't know.
Years ago, we had Yosemite Sam who, uh, just liked the lifestyle, they were absolutely, um, I mean, he was still dealing with steel.
So, what we need to do right now is make a decision on the job description itself, and then probably do a, a. And then probably do a, a salary survey.
Uh, I'm sure, I think Tommy's already done this.
She's already done one, yeah. I mean, I've already looked at salaries.
The salary, I mean, it's what we can afford. And I'm not, and I'm not interested in getting out there and trying to compete with some of these counties that are, I mean, you wouldn't compete with Shuhan. You wouldn't compete with, it's really even because they have this big metropolitan area and they're, hey. Are there maybe somebody out there that wants to come to a rule?
Well, if you go, if you say, what was the, what was the contract before, was it seventy-six hundred a month? Is what I still need to remember.
I'm always looking at, when I was looking at positions, I was just looking at that.
You compare to your own, you go, oh. Seventy-six hundred be ninety-one thousand two hundred. That's pretty good.
I'm not interested in paying that much. I'm just thinking about, we have to do something about administrative orders.
Oh, no, Wes.
On the administrative side still, I was still, you know. But we won't get anything done if our planning director keeps going down.
Annual rate of eighty-nine five twenty for seventy-four.
Eighty-nine five twenty.
What was that one?
That's the annual rate. Maybe the.
That we had.
Was in the contract.
Okay. Do you know what the salaries for the senior planner? So what's the senior planner? Is Jimmy coming back?
So of our comparable counties, Stevens and Whitman didn't report on this one. But this is out of the AWC book. This is out of the AWC book. Is that the most current thing?
Yes. I do have the last year's figures that were provided that does have Stevens and Whitman on there. For that position, with the caveat that a lot of the other counties have that community development.
Whitman was way low.
Within.
Stevens was sort of. Okay. So it's a comparable counties to us. So Douglas', their salary range is eighty-three, forty-eight on the low end to ninety, forty-five on the high end. Jefferson's is sixty-seven, fifty-one on the low end to ninety, seventy-three on the high end. Kititas is seven thousand and two dollars to ninety-four, twenty-two. Clickitap is sixty-eight hundred to eighty-eight, seventy-three. Mason's ninety-four, ninety-three to ten thousand, seven, seventy-four. Wall Walla is sixty-seven, seventy-five to ninety-nine, ninety-three, ninety-nine, sixty-three, sorry. Ours was a flat seventy-four, sixty-four. So, I mean, I guess we're in the middle of the range with a single number. But do we want to bring it in there?
Like I say, some don't even go that far, they just put you in.
Well, no, so, so, I mean, eighty-four to ninety-six thousand.
Seventy-four is eighty-nine, right?
Cause seven thousand is eighty-four. Seven thousand a month is eighty-four. Eight thousand a month is ninety-six. That's a little bit narrower range, but falls within.
Well, I'm, I'm putting it kind of low myself just because of, I'm just guessing what kind of response we're gonna get. I don't know if the money's gonna make it happen. So, um, cause I was thinking more like, you know, sixty-five, seventy-five. Well, our senior, our senior, I'm just.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Are you?
Yeah.
I mean.
No, it's, you wanna go down in money, I am perfectly.
Well, the reason is just because we're cutting that administrative services side too.
Well, that's true.
No.
And a lot of these, a lot of these are community development director.
So it just doesn't have the building department under it? It doesn't have the administrative services to any degree?
Okay, so, okay.
I mean, and so, you know, when we get into things like AMS and things like that, you know, that's, that's it.
What are we gonna do?
Okay, so, so, so you wanna, what are you, what are you, annual like that, or you wanna go?
That was sixty-five to seventy-five monthly, and then it comes out to what? Eighty-four is the top end level for annuals?
Seven is eighty-four.
Seven is eighty-four. And what's seventy-five, that's?
Ninety thousand.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's a pretty good top end. Do we wanna do?
Yeah, that's ninety, yeah, seventy-five.
Are we coming in at a DOE depending on experience?
Yeah.
So sixty-five runs you about?
Sixty-five is seventy-eight thousand.
That's pretty good, really, for an economic county. You know, I think, what, what do you think Perry started at here? I mean, of course, that's quite a ways to go.
It was, it was all over, six thousand something.
Yeah. But that was, obviously, that was.
Long enough, yeah.
So I don't know, that range is pretty good range. I mean, that's, that's ninety-five range.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so now that we've got the job description done, we've got the pay range done for that job. Administrative staff. Okay. The things that I am concerned about, not primarily, but a lot of are like construction type items. Like, let's say we were gonna do that, that.
District management?
Yeah, basically like if we gotta go out for, let's say we do the entrance on the, on the courthouse, okay? Who's gonna facilitate the start to finish? Who, if we have to, to create another like management district for some weird reason? We'll take that, that's a little bit of.
So for instance, that's what, you know, say Champaign Shore, Champaign Shores. You know, Champaign Shores from the city's end of it, I would do that part of it, but I also work with.
Right, I'm not talking about that in particular. I guess I'm talking about projects contained within the counties. The facilities projects, exactly, like the, the ceiling project. That's not a planner's project.
Not, so, you know, I wouldn't want to uncover.
Okay, but we have to uncover somebody.
Yeah, so, so you can contract it, if you're gonna have somebody being our, you can contract.
With somebody to do project management. What do we have to, what's our bidding requirements?
You know, Jerry Litt was a planner for Davis County. And he did that and ended up, when he retired, went and did it in Renton or over there in the West Side. I mean, you know, that's, you know, he did that kind of stuff. I mean, we can have him do that kind of stuff, ceiling management. Because they should know that stuff. And whether it's the existing person or.
Are you talking about the, the maintenance department? Knowing how to go all the way to that extent of new construction?
The way he's been doing that, he hadn't had the experience, it's clear.
Okay, well, the.
So, just, just, just get a, just a little sausage grinder, eh?
Well, it's sausage grinder up until the point that you have to make the decision on who's gonna do something. Like, can we sit here and?
No, 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 what I mean by that is that we're brainstorming how to deal with that.
So, yeah.
That's what I mean, I mean, cause I, I realize that you gotta make decisions at a certain point. You have to have people that lead into those kind of things. I don't see where it's been done exceptionally well.
Agree with that, but it got done to a, to a.
Again, my question is, is, are you, are you arguing to have the planning director do that?
No.
Okay, okay.
Nope, not at all. I've already acquiesced to the, the planning director needs to be a planning director. I've already done that, okay? And, and we've, we've set a salary range that reflect, that is reflective of that. But what I'm saying is, is that, you know, after we get this planning director, there's gonna be someone that comes in. And we're gonna go, somebody goes, is gonna go, hey, who's gonna be in charge? And we're gonna look over and lay it. And Laney is gonna end up being the catch-all for these administrative duties.
Well, that's what you think. So we have to figure out.
In two and a half years, I've watched these funny little things go on where it's like, who's gonna?
I have two, gee.
And the reason is because we don't have anybody that's, whatever, I mean, honestly, would it be nice to have a public works employee? This, I was brainstorming the other day.
Well, that's, I actually was going through my mind just now, because those in some places are public works off the purchasing and, and bidding procedures. But our public works functions, so.
But you can't, but, but I, I will not put extra burden onto them just because, just to shift the burden.
No, I'm talking about the department, not the, you know, I'm talking about the department and possibly somebody in it, so. And because you can't, you can't really just start shifting the road fund dollars to pay for.
Infrastructure services, right, exactly.
But, but on the other hand, the experience and the oversight and the.
Or sharing costs. You know, if you have, if they have the need for another engineer, let's say, or whatever. And we have a need for an administrative, you know, person who puts together, you know, hey, we need the job packet for the ceiling. Or we, you know, things like that. That's where I would like to start looking. So obviously, I think we're good with the.
Okay, and then, and, and just, and just brainstorming how we might do that through public works. Because as far as the contracting, you know, is concerned, you know, how contracts are for public works projects, they're standard contracts. The road projects, they're very standard. But they're standard contracts and everything else that goes in there that, they might be that thing. And this much of it might be the actual specs of the project. The rest of it specs are standard. So I even got those and just went to the engineers and said, give me your standard, standard bid and spec thing. And then I'll throw out everything I don't need and use it. I'd skate my project or something like that, because there's somebody else.
Okay, so when you've come to the conclusion that our planning director is not getting, is gonna be less on the administrative side. We figured out that the job description that you sent up, everything's long, run it by.
HR.
HR and Chief Service Deputy, and just make sure that they pass muster with them. I'm good with it, you're good with it, right?
And one thing we might wanna do is that when we do interview, just kinda get a sense for sometimes they need, they need to pick something like that. Especially those kinds of things that deal with what are the true plans for the development.
If we, I don't think we need to codify it today then if we're gonna have, so that can be an HR look at it. But we made the decision.
So if it, if it goes, if it goes by them, do we, I mean, I don't have to explain it.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
I would say if it goes by them, that, that so.
That's good to go.
Yeah, I would move pending the Chief Service Deputy and HR Director's acceptance of the job summary. But the, but it be posted for, posted as soon as possible.
Okay, second motion.
Okay, we see the discussion.
Very well.
All in favor? Marcy, we started our discussion a little bit earlier because we had some time.
Yeah.
But Paige got it on.
You mentioned that today.
Okay.
Did this, and, and really, the beginning of that discussion was just, was just going over.
The rest discussion.
The last discussion.
Yeah. The last discussion, which was.
But I think she did miss the part where you actually read the, the new proposed job description. So she came in right after that, so.
If I could get.
If I could get, I don't know, a copy of the new one and the old one just to compare or?
The old one, you mean the old one where the position already existed here? Because the other one was just a a very rough draft of something that um is thrown out there for discussion. And the main point on it, we didn't even get into it, and we just got to the main point, and that's responsibilities and comprehensive plan.
What, are you talking about the the one that we have that exists in the county for the planning director? Or the one that Chris and I were discussing the other day?
The one you were discussing the other day.
Yeah, that was just a very, very. So that was a, that was a rough draft, I mean, I guess you you emailed it to us.
No, it's public document.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it'd just be interesting to know how it was refined to what you just said on today.
One, the discussion the other day, and it was, Chris and I got into just a discussion basically of a little bit of semantics, I guess.
That's most, it was mostly semantics.
Mostly semantics, I guess. That in the very beginning, and it's a public document, so, you know, I'd say she can just have it.
Yeah, me too, I mean, you know, the, just the word, a word to the wise.
Mark draft, make sure it is marked draft.
A word to the wise is just that, you know, that uh the first sentence was just planted there to go, here's the most pending situation that we have today. And so, put it right on the top and not meant to have it be dramatically organized.
I know, but but.
No, 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 but that's that's just.
That's the way I would.
We finally, we've we've, this is a very, very important move, and it it is, it's created a lot of discussion. And we're finally, we've got to where we, everybody has reached consensus on where we wanna go.
And so, what, did you decide whether the planning director will have responsibility for the comp plan, or that's?
He, and that was one of the things that we talked about, the planning director, in my opinion, okay, I will, I'll say it, in my opinion, does not have the um he does not have the responsibility to come up with a comprehensive plan. Okay, so that is the planning, that is the the planning commission, that is people in general out in the county. And then that's the Board of County Commissioners with the final determination of the comprehensive plan. Their job, the planning director's job and the planning uh department's job is to implement the pieces of the comprehensive plan. Looking at it from the shorelines, management act, the uh critical areas, the zoning maps and things that come up. They have to take all that together and find out if a project that that they're looking at, that someone is giving them, adheres to um the comprehensive plan as we've voted.
So basically, implement the plan and not necessarily write it.
And and I'm not saying that they can't have, you know, that they can't help write it. But they're not responsible for writing it. And I I guess that's my own, my own thoughts, because I've heard in other places that everybody else does the work, and the county county commissioners just at the end look at it and go, yea or nay.
But when they do say yea or nay, they typically remand it back to the planning commission for more work if they identify things that they don't.
I can't tell you, I all, I can't tell you if they typically do or not. All I know is that if they don't say yea to it, if they change it, they have to hold their own public hearing, and they have to come up with a record of why, recorded decision. So.
So who would prepare the thing you'd be saying yea or nay to?
Well, the the planning commission ultimately ha- has the responsibility of um basically putting together most of the of the um comprehensive plan. Now, who gives that to them? For, in our case, it was the county commissioners gave it to them. We jointly looked at it, came up with a draft that we wanted to give to them, based on a lot of information out of previous drafts and previous documents.
But the person that prepared that draft was Perry Houston.
The person that prepared that draft was Perry?
Well, I mean.
No, he wasn't, cause we sat there and we sat there and, or you talked, whatever you want.
Right, right.
About the, about it for, based on.
They got there in front of us and.
Yeah, we were like, yeah, and we would say, yeah, and we went through it section by section and made changes. Well, yeah, but he didn't, he didn't go, he didn't draw out, uh draft something and say, this is what I'm gonna give to the planning commission.
No, he interacted with us to do that, and that's what I expected.
He said, this is, he said, this is what exists, what would you like?
But, well.
That's the difference that I see.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that is the difference that I see.
And and I I agree that that's what happened, and so um I really emphasize the fact that the planning director is a very key player in developing that plan. Because number one, when you tell them what you want, they tell you if it's outside of the scope of the law, otherwise, they're not doing their job.
And I I'm not saying that they aren't an integral part of coming up with it, but they are not responsible for developing the comprehensive plan. It's just.
All by itself, you are very correct.
Okay, perfect.
So I guess, just to clarify, so you, right, you've got the county commissioners, the planning commission, the public, all this input, and you could say, all right, these are the things we want. But then somebody is sort of the scribe who assembles that and writes it into.
Which that is the planning, that is the uh, that is the planning uh department, okay? Whether that be solely on the planning director, or the planning director goes, see, I want.
Well, yeah, just a case in point, Angie, ever.
Yeah.
You know, she were in char, both of them had a lot to do with, you know, Perry would give them various assignments, and they would compile it and bring it. And then they bring it to us and put it up here, and we go through it line by line, and if we wanted to change something, we would change it here. And that's what we sent after we got completely through that process, that's what we sent to the planning commission.
And I agree with Chris about the fact where he says that the a planning director needs to know the laws in regards to.
Absolutely, yeah.
Planning, so that he can assist us, or whoever it may be, or the planning commission, assist them in in saying, okay, legally, this should be in the document, or this should not be in the document, or, you know, whatever.
So under the Administration Enforcement and Zoning Subdivision Shoreline Management Regulations and the State Environmental Policy Act, it includes a bullet point that says, manage the development of long-range planning efforts and implementation measures for Oklahoma County, which includes collecting and evaluating land use, housing, population, employment, natural resources data. Another bullet says, identify and define long-range planning issues, develop appropriate policies and alternatives for presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. Prepare and deliver oral written representations at public hearings and meetings. Oversight the preparation of information reports for the planning commission, the hearing examiner, Board of County Commissioners, and any citizen boards charged with accompling accomplishing other county land use objectives. Coordinate special project as assigned by the Board of County Commissioners and provide research for and develop county policy for presentation the Board of County Commissioners is directed. And all of those features are the development of comprehensive plan. Collect and evaluate land use, housing, population, and then prepare some things with some meat that goes, you know, and then then that's based on really, you might come in here and say, I mean, at the initial stage or something like that, here's the comp table of contents, and under the thirty-six seventy, the Planning Enabling Act, these are the things that we have to do, those items that I just read um that evaluate land use, housing, population.
You do know that I agreed with you on your last iteration, right?
Right, so I'm capturing that comprehensive planning effort right there.
So are we arguing to argue?
No, no, we just, what we need to do is thinning for our business or.
Okay, my understanding.
Sorry, if I have more questions, I ask them after I.
You what?
If I have more questions, I can follow up after I read.
Absolutely.
The job description.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, absolutely.
And do you want a copy of this document?
The thing you, the C P A thing you were just reading?
No, that that's the planning director drop description.
Yeah, oh, that's what you were just reading.
Hmm?
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I printed it.
Yeah, and then maybe the original one.
Yeah, now that, that original is.
The draft.
Is, yeah.
Just, yeah, okay, let me uh it's not, it's a hit. Let me see. Holy cow. I just pause it out. And I didn't design it to not be able to print the second one.
Things right out of the juices.
I get so mobile. And it sits there on my desk at home on most of the time.
Non-final final, right?
All right, thanks.
It's gotta go to.
Yeah, it's gotta go to.
Yeah, it's not, it's still got internal review, but.
Yes. Right, but also the civil deputy.
Yeah, that's a definitional. The only supervisors are us.
You know, we are super too. Said we are super. Uh, okay, so I need to approve the uh special run vouchers for the fair in the amount of eighty-one thousand five hundred and five dollars.
Second motion.
Okay, motion second, discussion. You're not all in favor.
I move to approve vouchers. For the signature, I guess, there it is. So I'm going to approve vouchers and payroll in the total amount of one million two hundred four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second motion.
Motion second.
All in favor.
Right.
And move to approve public health vouchers and payroll in the total amount of sixty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second motion.
I'm motion second. All in favor.
Right.
Move to adjourn as the Oklahoma Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Orville Rural EMS District.
Second motion.
Motion second.
All in favor.
Right.
Right.
As the Orville Rural EMS District, I move to uh approve the voucher payment in the amount of ninety-six hundred and eighty dollars for the August EMS contract to Lifeline.
Second motion.
Okay, motion second.
All in favor.